First thing we have on that agenda is the pool committee update. And I'll leave that up to Al and Interstate Engineering to go ahead and do that presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council members. We appreciate the opportunity. In October, you appointed a five-member pool committee. And since that time, we've been working closely with Brent Moore and other people in the community to review the pool renovation plan and begin our fundraising campaign. I'm going to turn it over to Brent right now to go through this presentation. But it is the hope of the pool committee that the council will endorse the resolution. Brent?
Okay, good evening. This is Brent Moore. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Al, are you going to advance through the slides? Or is there someone?
I will, Brent, if Lonnie.
Okay, thanks Lonnie. Well, first, thanks again for the opportunity to present to the council an update on the pool. We're going to start and go relatively quickly through these beginning slides. But for those that haven't been involved in the pool, just going to review a bit of history. The last presentation to the council that I was involved in was back in January of 2020, before COVID hit us all. So, of course, the world has changed. Lonnie, go to the first slide, please. The next slide. So just as a history, both in 2013, so certainly coming to the slide. So planning for a replacement part in 2014. Lonnie, can you advance? There was a feasibility study that the city. The Interstate Engineering at the time interviewed the public, had several workshops, a survey at the school, and facilitated a discussion with the council. There were committee members on a committee at that stage, and a lot of public involvement. After that public involvement, the council made a decision in February of 2018 to replace the pool in its existing location versus a new location or an indoor pool. Go ahead, Lonnie. So, the base pool is what we call the main part of the renovations for the project. And so that's a new L-shaped pool, similar to this photo, with zero entry and connected to the main part of the pool, but separated by a gate, a safety gate. The fence area is expanded on that site. The fence isn't all the way to the edge of the site. And so we've, in the new plan, expanded what would be the future fenced area so that there'll be more lounging within the pool boundary. And one of the main important things, of course, in addition to replacing the pool, is replacing all the pool treatment systems, as those have pretty much been maintained as well as they can over the last almost four years. Let's move to the next slide. I'll follow in mine, too. Slight lag. And so the current updates are, the plans have been submitted and approved by the State Department of Public Health and Human Services, and that approval came June of this year. That approval lasts for two years. And then if construction has at least commenced, it can be extended for another year. And so the goal certainly is to begin construction within that two-year period from June of 2020. The final plans and specifications, which are the documents that the city would use to bid the project for contractors, according to Montana procurement laws, have been submitted to the city in August. And so those are complete. The next step would be letting a bid and selecting a contractor for the work. I think we missed a slide. In terms of fundraising, I guess it was cut out of there. The last time I met, and the committee has been reviewing this, too, with the council, one of the ideas for funding was the resort tax, and there it's identified. And this is going to turn it over to Al here in a minute. But as we discussed with the council back in January, if the city were to fund this project through a loan, a 20-year loan or bond, utilizing the resort tax, the annual payment on that, based upon an estimated cost of $1.6 million, would be around 110 to 130, just depending on the rates and also the terms, whether it's 20 or another term. So that was the discussion with the council. If they were to fund it, there were some other options discussed with the council at that stage. As the resort tax, of course, was being, going through the discussion of being renewed. And I participated, along with, I'm sure, many of you, in those conversations. And the pool was really ranked quite highly on those discussions. And so I think there was some expectation in January and following that that the resort tax would fund some of the pool. And the folks that I talked to around the community. And however, as we were moving into, hopefully, beginning construction this past summer, of course, we were going through COVID. And because of that, and an uncertainty in part on what resort tax revenue would look like this past summer, a decision was made to postpone moving forward with this project until the fall. And so now we're here to discuss, hopefully, moving the project forward again. So in addition to the resort tax and other funding options the city has, I can turn it over to Al now, and he can talk about the committee that has been established by the council.
Okay, thanks, Brent. Is Judith on? Judith is chairing our subcommittee on fundraising, so if she's on, I'd let her to go through that. Judith, are you here? Well, not hearing her. If she jumps on, she can come in here. But basically, what we've done, basically, is our purpose is to reduce the burden on the city by raising capital funds for the construction of the pool and also putting funds into an endowment that would help defray operational costs on a annual basis. What we've done is we've worked with the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation. They'll be administering our fundraising, and we will begin a capital fundraising plan here very quickly. We're kind of in a quiet period between now and the end of December. And so we're going to go for big, big numbers. And another opportunity is if people want to contribute directly to the city, we've made arrangements with the city on how to handle that. But our purpose is to begin an aggressive fundraising campaign and reduce the capital expenditures to the city. And hopefully, we can cover the whole nut, but we'll certainly do our best to cover as much of it as we can.
Thank you, Al. Want to open it up for some discussion now?
Let's let Brent go through the rest of the slides, because we do have a recommendation.
All right, Brent.
Well, I think Al or Judith covered it. Generally, you know, fundraising to date, there has been some fundraising for the pool over the years through the foundation, and there's an endowment for operations and maintenance. A committee has been also established, Friends of the Red Lodge Pool, that's raised funds. And go ahead, Al.
Just so you know, with that slide there, can you roll back to that slide? What'll happen is that the people that contribute to the capital cost of the pool, that money will go into the Friends of Red Lodge Pool Fund, the Montana Community Foundation Fund. And any monies that go to the continued operation and management will go into the endowment. So what we can do is we'll draw annually from the endowment. It'll rate about 4% per year. That check will be written to the city, and that will defray any operating costs. The work that we've done to date, based on Brent's research, is we're probably going to have to cover around $60,000 a year for operation and maintenance, plus or minus. Any questions? Again, Judith is chairing our fundraising effort, and she will be working very closely with Tracy at the foundation to administer all the checks or that come in. We can handle checks, wire transfers, credit card, cash. How will we go about doing that? Okay, Brent?
Yeah, and here's the resort tax slide I already talked about, so you can continue on. And then this is a committee slide.
Yeah, basically, we want to improve, have you approve the renovation plan as presented, with the minor exception that we want to move the family room that you see there in the center of the slide to Phase Two. We feel that there are safety issues, security issues, and access to the pool issues. You can see there, the door opens to the top of the slide, and people would have to come into the room from Hauser, then they would exit the room to come back into the main pool, and there would virtually no security. We believe that in Phase Two, which will depend on how we do on our fundraising, that we can improve and renovate the dressing room. And we want to put that family room into Phase Two. We just don't feel it'll be useful where it is right now. Okay, Brent, you're up.
Yep, and this slide just speaks for itself, the continued commitment, organization, working together and communicating to move the project forward. Can move on to the next one. Again, this is thanking the committee, folks that have been involved up until now, that every successful project takes the support of the community, so. So the next steps, as Al has mentioned there, group, the committee will work to raise funds, and we could support them through that effort. And additionally, the city, working with James, we will apply for LWCF grant, which opens this coming November, so we're getting close to having that cycle be open. That would be a grant of $250,000 for the pool, which will obviously be a substantial help and can come really at any stage during construction. So if the pool is being constructed next summer, we might still be going through the grant process. But we're really in good line now with those grants that are coming out of the federal government and also administered through the state. We've already made the connection with the state contact there. And then we really do believe, we hope, that the project will move forward. I think the community hopes it'll move forward and that we don't miss another construction season this next summer. And so we would hope that the city would move forward with the bonding process, understanding that the goal of the funding committee and the grant is to ultimately reduce the bond that would have to be drawn on at the time that costs were incurred. So, for example, when you begin construction, if we were to begin construction in April, a contractor would work in April, May, and June, and the first potentially draw or payment payout request from a contractor might not come until May or June. That would be the first point where the city would have to expend construction funds. By that point in time, you'd begin potentially drawing on a bond if there was not substantial funds raised or grants available to pay that first payout. And then as the project progressed through next construction season, by the end of the project, whatever would need to be drawn from a bond would be what was remaining from, that could not be paid through a grant or fundraising. But really, the city needs to make a commitment to that process in order for it to move forward. And so certainly, we believe, or I advocate certainly, to move forward so that we don't miss another construction season.
And I can add now that, again, we've prepared a brochure to distribute it once the council approves. And we've identified some potential sources of some substantial contributions. Again, depending upon the council approval. And we've identified several grants that we can apply for, and we have the support of the foundation. And also, one of our committee members has taken a course and has some experience in writing grants. So between the grants, private funding, the bonds, we feel like we can make a substantial reduction of the capital commitment from the city.
So, you know, the ideal, the ideal right now would be bidding the project in the January, February timeframe, with construction starting in April and ribbon cutting in the summer of 2022.
Okay, thanks, Brent. I guess we're open for any questions. I'm not sure. I think Lee Joyner is on the call. She's on our committee. I was hoping that Judith Gregory would be on the call. She's the vice chair. And also Anita is working on our communication and our brochure. And then we have support from Lindsay Hoffman and Laura Gunlach as well. So we're available for any questions you might have.
Open it up to council for questions from council, Dave?
Yes, I just want to clarify, Al. When you were talking about the operational cost, you said that that operational cost would defray any operational cost, and I think you just meant some operational cost, right? There's no guarantee that that's going to defray the operational cost, just it'll contribute toward that.
The plan is that any dollars that go into the Montana Community Foundation, which is the endowment at the foundation for operation, each year, we can draw 4% off that amount of money. That check will be written to the city. And then the city, whatever the operation costs are, that check will defray those expenses. Because our intention, we believe that the operational cost, based on history, will be in the $60,000 per year range for a three-month operation. Hopefully, less, but we're kind of being aggressive there. And if we can get an endowment that can generate $15,000, $20,000 to $30,000, that will reduce the commitment to the city to 30.
All right.
Could I also add that we will? I also want to add that we would like to participate. I'm here. I don't have my picture, but we can also participate in the fun run each year, and the monies from the fun run can have to be used for operation and maintenance. And just to clarify, we take a distribution from the endowment. It's actually a Red Lodge Area Community Foundation endowment. It sits at the Montana Community Foundation. They invest it. And we take a distribution. We've started taking distributions. Actually, we rolled it back into the endowment this year. But the distribution is based on 12 quarters. The past 12 quarters average balances at 4%. So if you add, right now, it's at $40,000. If you add another $50,000, that $50,000 gets averaged in, and you take a distribution every year. So we really have two sources of ongoing funding for O and M. One is distributions from that endowment, and the other is participation in the fun run, which I think will probably be pretty successful. So that money has to be used for operation and maintenance. It cannot be used for capital if it's from the fun run.
Did that answer your question, Dave?
It, yeah. I was, I was just concerned, because you had, when you had said before, you'd use the word "it'll cover any," which to me means it'll cover all. And I heard you say something later that I don't think that's, I mean, it's the hope, but there's no guarantee of that. And I just wanted to make sure that people didn't anticipate that and that on the off chance that there are some costs incurred by the city.
That's right. And I'm working on a business plan right now. It's in its early stages. It will circulate to Brent and also the rest of the committee. But based on history, just on income from the pool, from fees and whatever, you generate around $20,000 to $25,000 a year from income from the pool. So really, we're looking to make up that difference.
The second question that I had, Al, had to do with, I know you mentioned the foundation, but I also heard you say in there that there was going to be a separate fund set up at the city. My understanding is that there's potentially some, some large donations coming in that wanted to come directly to the city. Is there an action required from the council for us to set up a separate account to facilitate that? And if so, what is the timeline needed for that?
We discussed that with James and the mayor yesterday. I'll let the mayor answer that question.
So those will be set up in our capital. There will be just two separate line items set up for that. One would be for the pool, one would be for O and M. And at this time, we do not need council input on that until the time where we need to start spending money.
All right. I just wanted to make sure that there was a need to generate those accounts, that we were on that, and we didn't want to be to hold up in this process. So thank you, Mayor.
I'd just like to add, too, that the foundation has agreed to set up a discrete account, bank account for monies that come into the pool. We requested that, and they agreed to that.
I'm sorry, Judith. I didn't realize you were on the call. I'd let you do all, you're the more expert on this than I am. But I think we covered it.
I was a little late. Did you cover it?
I think so.
So I'm repeating.
Do you have any more comments from council on this?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is Micah.
Yeah, Micah.
Can you hear me? Okay. Just two, just two quick comments. Initially, in recognition of Veterans Day, thank you to all our hero veterans in the city. Thank you. And then I wanted to commend the pool team or the pool engineers in keeping the estimated cost where they had projected it a year ago. 1.5 to 1.7 is what they thought. Building materials are going through the roof, so I actually was anticipating that to be a little higher than what they originally projected. So very good job keeping that within your original projections.
Well, when Brent goes through the bidding process, I'm sure that's part of it. We've already spent about 139 of that $1.6. As we go through the bidding process, I'm sure Brent and the committee will keep.
Yep, okay. Any more comments from council?
I just want to thank, before we go, I just want to thank Brent for all the effort that he's done and working with our committee. Our committee is very much involved in this, and we had some questions, and we handled those pretty well. And we are moving forward. And also, I want to give a shout out to and Bruce for working with us. I think we're going to be a good team effort, and I think we're going to be very happy with the outcome.
Laurie, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. I would like to thank all the members of the pool committee and Brent and anybody who's worked with you. This is the fastest I've ever seen any group move on a project of this size and come to us with positive information. Thank you. The mayor did a wonderful job of finding these people.
Thank you.
Well, you got a committee of a bunch of type A, so we're going to get this done.
Any more comment from council? We'll open it up to the public then. Comments from the public. State your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Comments from the public on the pool. One more time. Comments from the public on the pool. We'll close the public comment period on that. Thank you for the great presentation, you guys. We'll move on to our next one, the resolution 3558, to support for the development and construction of a new city pool for discussion. James, do you want to add something to the resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just say that this is a pretty generic resolution. It shows that the city is committed to building a pool at its current location. We've obviously shown without why paying for the engineering. And what we hear is that a lot of the donors want to see that firm commitment through the city with the resolution. We've seen that before with the state parks and the soccer fields, where a lot of donors want to see that. They want to see that resolution. So that's what this is. I realize a lot of times, you can approve a resolution when it's not introduced, but I just hope the council would pass this. The committee can report it fully. This is obviously an item that has been discussed several times at council meetings. So I don't think there's too much question out there regarding to rebuild at its current location.
Thank you. Like James said, this will be up for action during the council meeting. It starts at 7:00. I'll take comments on the resolution 3558 from council. Laurie?
I just have one comment on the resolution on the sixth, whereas, toward the end of that sentence, "options for such the site." I think the word "such" should come out. I think I'd just say, "options for the site."
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey.
Mr. Mayor, do you want one of us to be at the 7 o'clock meeting in case there's any questions when you vote?
I don't think it would hurt, Al. We did get a lot of comments from the public, but we might have good people get in on the 7 o'clock session. So it'd be good to have one of you anyway.
Well, I'll plan on being there and any other committee member that wants to will come back at 8:00. Or at 7:00.
Okay, 7:00. Any council comment on 3558, the resolution? Comments from the public on resolution 3558? Comments from the public on resolution 3558? Support for the development and construction of a new city pool. One more time, public comment on 3558, the resolution to support the development and construction of a new city pool. Okay, well, in that discussion, that's all we had for the work session tonight. The regular council meeting will start at 7:00 PM promptly, and we'll go from there. We can all take a break for about a half hour here, and we'll move into the council meeting.
Is this meeting concluded?
The, the work session is over, and the business meeting will start at 7:00, yeah.
Thanks, Mary, for the comment there. Just a quick question. Does anybody have an explanation for why resolution 3557 was removed from the agenda tonight?
You know, you could ask the mayor. He's the one that makes the agenda. And if you have anything to say about it, even if it's not on the agenda, which I understand it's not, you can comment on that at public comment. it's not, you can comment on that at public comment at the business meeting, which is towards the beginning of the business meeting. Because that public comment is for anything within the council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. So if they've removed it from the agenda, you can comment about that or say anything that you want to say during public comment towards the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, yeah. Well, you know, I, I mean, I'm not talking to the council right now, but I think it's just a very dangerous and slippery slope. I mean, none of us, none of us support racism or intimidation, but once you start making decisions like that, they can be used to set precedent that can.
You know, I'm.
Drive.
I'm not with you because we're not in a meeting right now.
Sure, sure.
But you can say whatever you want during public comment.
Okay, I appreciate that.
As long as it's not on the agenda, so, all right?
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Hi, this is Rebecca, the city attorney. I believe from my understanding, the mayor removed it from tonight because he closed city hall because of COVID. And I believe he wanted to be able to give people an opportunity to be present is kind of my understanding of that. So it will come back up at a later date. I don't know when, but the agenda is always online and available, so you'll be able to know. If you'll watch the city's website each second and fourth Tuesday, you can see if it is back up for discussion or action.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's just because of COVID and he, the city hall has been closed to the general public, so to help prevent any more spread.
Well, I can understand that, so.
Yeah.
So we'll.
But yeah, I just wanted you to understand why it was taken off. It wasn't like it was any, anything other than it was just COVID.
Okay, well, thank you for your comment there. Appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Who does she think she is giving that order?
I'm limited to getting to the doctor's office and asking who on the city's agenda is at the end. What's up, my lady? It actually serves my purpose to learn. About eight minutes. All that, bro. How is that? All right. So, what's happening? I.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Larson.
Here.
Hoffman. Hoffman. Lyman.
Here.
Mayhem.
Here.
Stevenson.
Here.
Weemer.
Weemer.
Rob, are you on there? Westwood.
Here.
Mike, are you on?
Micah, are you on? All right. We did have a request at the beginning of the meeting to say if you were, when you're speaking, go ahead and turn your mic on, otherwise have your mic off, please. Getting a lot of feedback, which it would certainly help us if you would just mute your mic when you're ready to speak, turn it on and then turn it back off when you're done. Let's, a few minutes of October 13th.
Move to approve the minutes of October 13th for the working session as presented with attachments.
Second.
I will look for your comments. Comments on the minutes? Any comments on the minutes? Roll call.
Lyman.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Yes, and I did receive a text from Micah that said he is on and can hear us, so maybe, Micah, if you could respond via chat while you figure out the sound options.
Is it Micah?
Do you want to have Micah just call cell phone here?
Hey, Micah, if you can hear us, would you kind of call in on the mayor's phone?
Lonnie, Micah just texted me and said he is on, but he doesn't know how to chat.
Oh, I don't know what caller he is because I unmuted him.
Okay, for the sake of a public meeting, he probably, Micah, if you can hear me, it's probably going to be best if he calls in or something so he can have an affirmative vote, not a chat vote.
Yeah, let's have it. Better go to meeting.
Okay, so if, Micah, if you can just call and go to meeting, that was on the agenda?
He's called in before.
Is, is there a possibility, Lonnie, that you have muted all dialing callers and so he doesn't have the ability to unmute himself?
Lonnie, he just said he's going to rejoin.
Okay.
We had enough votes on the first, on person.
Okay, we have enough votes, so let's go ahead and do the next minutes.
Okay. Move to approve the regular session meeting minutes for October 13th as presented with attachments.
Second.
Comment. Roll call.
Simon.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Westwood.
Yes, and I think I heard Micah in the comments, too.
Are you on, Micah?
Maybe my bad, I thought I heard him seconded, so.
Okay, Micah, are you on there now? Did you just join, Micah?
Hello.
There he is.
All right, you're on.
Yeah. Here.
Okay.
So, any more minutes? Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes for the working session on October 27th with attachments as presented.
Second.
Second, yes.
Comment. Roll call.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Westwood.
Yes, and I think I heard Micah in the comments, too.
Are you on, Micah?
Maybe my bad, I thought I heard him seconded, so.
Okay, Micah, are you on there now? Did you just join, Micah?
Hello.
There he is.
All right, you're on.
Yeah. Wow. Here.
Okay. So, any more minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes for the working session on October 27th with attachments as presented.
Second.
Second, yes.
Comment. Roll call.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Westwood.
Yes.
And I would like to thank Lonnie for an excellent job on the minutes this time.
I think she does an excellent job on the minutes every time.
Warrants payable.
Move to approve the warrants payable as presented for the total amount of $259,849.66. The largest ones were for Northwestern Energy, $12,280.89. It continues to remain low since the brief bites on Broadway. Republic Services, $38,831.36. It's still high. Oldest audit, for the latest audit, $26,250. And Lonnie again confirms what an excellent job they're doing. Great West Engineering, $31,069.44 for the ongoing work that's doing for capital projects. Again, the total is $259,849.66 and signed off by Tom Lyman and Glory Mayhem.
Second.
Comments on warrants payable. Roll call.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Westwood.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is officer reports. Everybody's received the officer report. They're available in the packet and I'll just give you an activity report last October 2020.
Another busy month for our police department.
Yes. Mayor, comments. Now, we'll start out by informing everybody we did set up Facebook and Google group posts that ordinance 3557 is not going to be on the agenda tonight. We had to, given a large number of good cases that have increased in the county, we built a grid to lock down city hall, so we get people an opportunity to come here in person and, and state their opinions on that resolution, so we're moving that hopefully to November 24th. We're going to keep that agenda, which is a work session, very open so that if we do have to conduct it during, with the go-to meeting, that everybody will have a chance to voice their opinions. And so let's look forward to doing that on November 24th. The other part of that, you know, on the agenda, the police commission appointment, we had three applicants. All three were very well qualified. We had one that did drop out. And this is my appointment with council approval, and I'm appointing Kristen Cogswell to the police commission. I'll take the.
Move.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the mayor's appointment of Kristen Cogswell to the police commission.
Enthusiastic second.
Any comment?
Good choice.
Roll call.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayhem.
Yes.
Stevenson.
Yes.
Westwood.
Yes.
Thank you. Kristen, I know you're on. I'll forward you the chairman's email address and telephone number. It might not be a bad idea to get a, get a screwdriver and, and talk over what the police commission does and we'll go from there. So welcome aboard. Want to also say once again, the audit has been done. We do not have a copy of it at city hall yet. As soon as we do have a copy here at city hall, you're all welcome to come and read through that document and we'll go from there. What else we got?
Christmas stroll.
We have a Christmas stroll update from Sherry Weemer.
She's there.
Can't hear you, Sherry.
Sherry, your, your mic shows that you're on, your lips aren't moving, so we can't hear you. I see tech support moving in in the background.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, sorry. Shut this down.
Oh, okay.
No, we can't hear.
Go ahead, Sherry. The last two again.
I think she was trying to kill just the feedback and, and kill. I'll talk to you tomorrow about it.
Okay.
Because I need four or five if you've got that many.
Absolutely. I'll make that happen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone can address the council at this time on any topic within the city's jurisdiction, specifically on the agenda. If you do speak, please give us your name and your address. You would be held with three minutes. We're open for public comment. This is the public comment period. We are open to public comments.
Hi, this is Maddie Clark with the Boys and Girls Club. Let me see if I can share my camera here. I'm on here. We have a potential street closure later in the meeting today, but I guess I had a quick question. With the skate park being recently open, which is exciting, club has received a few concerns just about the amount of kids on our block during the afternoon and the amount of cars that go down that street. Who would I bring these concerns to if, you know, I come with more of a formal agenda, I suppose?
I would talk to Chief Wells on that.
Okay, perfect. I will give him a call, and, you know, if there's a committee that needs to be formed, obviously, this has just happened as the skate park just opened, but there are lots of kids. I don't know if any of you have driven down there lately, but it is a bit of a safety concern.
Okay, thank you, Maddie.
Yep, thanks.
Any other public comments? Public comments? Move on to old business. This is a city-owned land permit, Boys and Girls Club. Breakfast with Santa. James, you want to fill us in on this?
Breakfast with Santa is scheduled for December 5th, Saturday, from 7:00 a.m. to noon. They would like to do a street closure there. As we discussed the last meeting, and now, just so you're aware, the discussion was about, the main concern was the application stating use of terms to close the street, which is not really the best option. And the chief did say we have some barricades that should be available for that. I just wanted to make a note there that the street closure could happen differently than what's requested on the application.
Sure, that's great. And if barricades are available, we can make that work.
Thank you.
Move to approve, oh, move to approve the use of city-owned land permit submitted by the Boys and Girls Club, conditional upon a current approval from the Health Department. Understanding that we're in a fluid environment, I know that we're still working with them, but I just wanted to acknowledge that earlier in the year, we said we'd require that approval going into it. So I want to move to approve this conditional on the continued improvement of the Health Department.
Second, where's the condition?
Discussion on this.
I'm good. I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. I know this is a tricky environment to be trying to plan an event right now, and so I'm very cognizant of all the effort that has been sent on this as well as the others. My fingers are crossed and wishing the best.
Discussion from the public. Discussion from the public on the street closure. Roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lyman?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
And I would like to thank Lonnie for an excellent job on the minutes this time.
I think she does an excellent job on the minutes every time.
Warrants payable.
Move to approve the warrants payable as presented for the total amount of $259,849.66. The largest ones were for Northwestern Energy, $12,280.89. It continues to remain low since the brief fights on Broadway. Republic Services, $38,831.36. It's still high. Oldest audit for the latest audit, $26,250. And Lonnie again confirms what an excellent job they're doing. Great West Engineering, $31,069.44 for the ongoing work they're doing for capital projects. Again, the total is $259,849.66 and signed off by Tom Lyman and Glory Mayhem.
Second.
Comments on warrants payable? Roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lyman?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to Resolution 3559, the adoption of the 2020 Red Lodge growth policy. You have for action.
Let me start with the motion to accept Resolution 3559, the adoption of the 2020 Red Lodge growth policy.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
So, as a member of the planning board, let me just say I was part of this very long and extensive process. We did get a lot of information that it occurred over. I'd have to defer to James for the number of meetings, but I want to say in excess of 25 that went into this. There are a lot of input, a lot of opportunity for input. Statutorily, it requires a couple of public hearings. We have already had those prior to tonight, so this does not need to be a public hearing. But after those public hearings, there was an opening for a timeframe for public comment. It is my understanding that no additional public comment was received, and the only thing remaining for us is to accept that and add that to our documents for the city. James, did I miss anything, sir?
No, you did not.
Any other comments on the growth policy? Glory?
Just that it was a huge effort for all the people on the planning board and James, and we appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
And just for the record, I would like to restate the motion now that I found it. I move to approve Resolution Number 3559, a resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge, Montana to adopt the 2020 Red Lodge growth policy.
Second again.
All right. I just wanted it official for the record.
Okay, thank you. Comment from the public? Roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lyman?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
Good job, James.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the planning.
Thanks to the planning board. Move on to new business. We have Resolution 3558, this is the support for the development and construction of the city pool. This is up for action.
That should be, Micah, he should make the motion.
I'll take the motion.
Move to approve Resolution 3558, a resolution of the City Council of Red Lodge, Montana, supporting the development and construction of a pool at the existing pool location.
Second.
We discussed this at the work session, but I'll take more discussion from the table. Discussion from the public on Resolution 3558, support for the development and construction of the new city pool. Take comments from the public. Roll call.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lyman?
Yes.
Mayhem?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Westwood?
Yes.
Thank you. Kristen, I know you're on. I'll forward you the chairman's email address and telephone number. It might not be a bad idea to get a screen drawer and talk over what the police commission does, and we'll go from there. So welcome aboard. Want to also say once again, the audit has been done. We do not have a copy of it at City Hall yet. As soon as we do have a copy here at City Hall, you're all welcome to come and read through that document, and we'll go from there. What else we got?
Christmas stroll update.
We have a Christmas stroll update from Sherry Weemer.
She's there.
Can't hear you, Sherry.
Sherry, your mic shows that you're on. Your lips aren't moving, so we can't hear you. I see tech support moving in in the background.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry. Shut this down.
Oh, okay.
Now we can't hear.
Go ahead, Sherry. The last two again.
I think she was trying to kill just the feedback and killed the whole session.
Go ahead, Sherry.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
Sorry. I've decided that this year's stroll is all about compromise with everything going on. We've reached out over and over again for input from all the businesses, and we've taken all their comments and made lots of adjustments. So, the final issue per time is it's going to be from 4:00 to 8:00. Businesses wanted people to be able to shop earlier, so this spreads everybody out and lets them come in earlier during the day. And yet, for those folks that didn't want to lose all the parking all day, it lets people come in during the day, be able to park right in front of some of the businesses, and then later in the day, they can move off and get settled. So, starting at 4:00, and then the Blade Parade will take off at 5:00. That's also an hour earlier to give people a chance to make their way around. The Blade Parade is going to be both nights, and this is a great event that's going to be outside. Everything we're doing this year is to keep people outside. So Blade Parade at 5:00, and then we'll continue on with the Blue Light Ceremony on Friday at 5:30 to honor our fallen officers. And then off with the shopping from 6:00 to 8:00. And so, with that said, we need to help our businesses, and the biggest challenge they're running into is helping with keeping the traffic flow down on the inside of their businesses. So we've had a great volunteer step up. I'll be sending out more information on how we're going to handle that. But he's going to organize helpers for door duty. They'll actually stand at the doors and help people in and out of the buildings and keep things kind of under control while still being able to make some money. So many businesses depend on this stroll to get them through winter. So everything we're doing is geared up, like I said, to keep people outside, and to help that, we're buying extra fire pits. We're keeping the nonprofits on the street so people can still mill around outside, wander up and down, and have a great time while they're waiting to get inside the businesses and spend some money. I've spoken to Dr. George, Commissioner Bullock, and they're both very happy with this plan. It is a fluid event for more adjustments. I'm telling everybody to go to redlodge.com, our Facebook page, and I hope you all are getting chamber chat. That's how we'll communicate with everyone. So I feel like we have a good plan. We've listened to everybody and still excited for a great event. That's all I got.
Very good. So what you need from me is a letter to MDOT for the street closure. Does anyone on council have a problem with me writing that letter?
No, sir.
I am in support.
I support that letter.
Micah?
Go for it.
All right. I'll write the letter, Sherry. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your support.
May, sorry, May. Do you support that?
Yes, I do, sir.
All right. Sorry about that. Glory has a question?
Yeah. Sherry, do you have vests that we could wear on the street for directing traffic for the Blade Parade?
I'm trying to buy Santa hats for everyone is what our go-to is going to be, so I hope that works out great.
Right safety wearing Santa hats.
That would work for me, Sherry. I asked the chief about the barricades, and he's agreed to my request to move the barricades back north from 8th Street, but he said he wants who are out on the streets directing traffic to wear orange or yellow robes.
Hold the reflective vest, you bet. I'll pull every one I can find. I should have a good supply for that for you. Yes.
I'll talk to you tomorrow about it. Because I need four or five if you've got that many.
Absolutely. I'll make that happen.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. We'll move on to public comments. Anyone can address the council at this time on any topic within the city's jurisdiction, specifically on the agenda. If you do speak, please give us your name and your address. You would be held with three minutes. We're open for public comment. This is the public comment period. We are open to public comments.
Hi, this is Maddie Clark with the Boys and Girls Club. Let me see if I can share my camera here. I'm on here. We have a potential street closure later in the meeting today, but I guess I had a quick question. With the skate park being recently open, which is exciting, club has received a few concerns just about the amount of kids on our block during the afternoon and the amount of cars that go down that street. Who would I bring these concerns to if, you know, I come with more of a formal agenda, I suppose?
I would talk to Chief Wells on that.
Okay, perfect. I will give him a call, and, you know, if there's a committee that needs to be formed, obviously, this has just happened as the skate park just opened, but there are lots[1308.83]